We must, we must be on, right?
It was the first time for our.
Ready? Call this meeting to order. First up is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, roll call for us, please.
Brooks, here, Fish, Housman, Jones, McInerney, Wells.
Mayor Beasley.
Here, very good. Yep, we have a quorum. We may proceed. Item three is the approval of the agenda as it appears before us tonight. Motion from McInerney, second by Fish, to approve the agenda. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item four, we have the minutes of the May 11 briefing and the May 15 regular council meeting. I will entertain the motion and a second for those approvals. Motion from Brooks, second by McInerney to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Questions or discussion? If not, yes. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item five, the claims found on pages 12 through 14 for May.
Next year, can we create a budget line item for the flowers out of Brandon or hold them to a specific budget? I was gonna say something last year, I thought it'd be a one-time deal, but then this year was even higher, so it seems like a lot for annuals or perennials, whichever the ones are that come up once a year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Fish, second by Brooks, to approve the claims for June 5. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, item six, visitors and timed items. We have a public hearing to consider a retail on/off sale wine license for the boutique at 513 Split Rock and then also the malt beverage license for the same establishment.
The planning and zoning commission has not approved their conditional use permit. They were supposed to last Thursday, but they didn't have a quorum, so if you so choose, you would need to make it contingent upon approval of the conditional use permit by planning and zoning for both of these.
If we can do that, I'll move and do that.
A motion from Brooks, second by McInerney, to approve both these. With the understanding that as soon as approval from the planning and zoning gives their conditional use, then it takes effect. Our attorney has something.
I just, I think we've had two meetings that were canceled because they didn't have forms. I didn't know if they're discussing giving this a place or.
No, we talked about the timing on that.
The timing for the variances wouldn't work for a special meeting because we have to re-advertise on those, so that would just be about the same week as their normal meeting in July.
Do you know when they're gonna have it? I mean, if again.
Well.
I mean, because, I mean, that, we've already missed two, so I'm just kinda thinking we need to reschedule something and figure out, get some of those things worked down to think before you. Before people start getting.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have a problem with that. I just, I don't know when they're gonna give CP.
Yes. As soon as, yeah.
That's gonna be at their next.
No, no.
They'll be at their next meeting.
Which would be the 15th.
Yep.
Their meeting scheduled for the 15th, so you should have an action by the 15th, which is, what, about 10 days. Will that work for you? Okay.
But I, I would say that if, you know.
Maybe we should take a roll call, make sure that they're gonna be at that meeting, so that if we have to change it or something, because we are delaying people on some of this stuff, and it's, it's not the staff's fault, it's just.
Melissa sends out the agenda usually the Thursday prior to the meeting, or maybe Friday at the latest.
Yep.
And usually, if they're, if they can't make it, we'll know soon thereafter, but these are regularly scheduled meetings.
Yes.
Right, but I'm just, you know, we've canceled two, and so it might be nice to know ahead of time early now, so maybe until Thursday, in case we need to do a special meeting.
Yeah.
When, when she sends out the schedule for those meetings on the emails at the bottom, it's, also wants to know if, when you get that, are you willing to attend, and you can click that pretty quick and go back with it. And I won't argue that we need to get them together and have a little chat with them or something.
Yes. And like I said, it, this should happen by the 15th. If not, we will have to look at, to take care of things like this. Obviously, the variance and stuff, when we have to repost, they have to be posted for X amount of days, so we can't, you know, but something like this, I think we could call a special meeting for and get it taken care of if need be.
Do we have a provision where we can call in too for those kind of meetings? I know I did that one time.
We do. I mean, it's, it's like any other public meeting, you can call in and do it, but I think we were missing four at the last P&amp;Z meeting. One was a medical issue, two were out of town with meetings, so.
Yeah. And then the previous one, we had a confusion on the, what was written on the application for this, this also, and then we, we were a little, we didn't know how to proceed, so. Okay, with that being said, I do have a motion and a second to approve this on condition that the P&amp;Z approves their, their conditional use. With that being said, any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, fingers crossed, the 15th, we're, we're, you guys will be good to go. Great.
Mayor?
Yes.
If the council wants to get out of their council packet and go back in again and move to number two, to get the complete package. The one I've had in there for the short.
Okay.
Should be 91 pages.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
It's going through the same menu, except there's two there.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That's all right, thank you. All right. With that being said, anything else, visitors and timed items? Yes?
I gave a couple people a notice, I'd like to speak.
Okay, and they're real, they realize that since they weren't on the agenda, they're limited to five minutes?
I don't know that they are aware of that, but you can make them aware of that.
I believe I just did.
I think you just did.
Okay. Who? Just push the purple button. There's a little switch right here. And then put, there you go.
Okay. My name is Kami Gladys. I live at 1320 Meadowbrook Trail in the Eagle Creek Division, and I'm here today to find out what can be done to make the intersection of Sandstone Avenue and Holly Boulevard a safer area for residents who are entering and leaving our housing development. In the last two weeks, there have been two accidents there, and that has kind of prompted me to come in and kind of see how much, you know, the situation has been discussed here. There's a lot of talk in our neighborhood, but no one seems to ever come and find out what's going on at these meetings, so I'm taking the initiative.
Very good.
I've lived there for 11 years, and every year it seems like it gets busier and busier, and then now with Highway 100 coming in, it's gonna keep getting busier. Right now, that's the only, Sandstone is the only way to get in and out of our development, so that's our, our only way to get out is that way. Our only way to get in is that way. People are going 45 supposedly, but they should really, you know, a lot of times they're going 50, 55. So it's, it's just a dangerous area, and I have little kids, and I worry about every time I slow down there, I turn my blinker on at the apartments and start to slow down at the apartments, which is like a full block ahead of where I need to turn, and people are still right up behind me, almost hitting me. I guess I don't know what the solution is. I'm sure that if this has been discussed before, which I did talk to Paul before the meeting, and he said it has been, which I'm, you know, thankful to hear about. I don't know if the solution is turning lanes that might help as far as getting into our development, but as far as getting out of our development, like I said, there's no other way to get out. The smart thing to me would be to maybe put in, you know, connect Meadowbrook Trail to the Heritage Road where the light is already there, but I know there's complications with the land in between that area. I don't know if there's something that our development could do as far as getting signatures to help show, you know, that this is something that we're all concerned about. I would be willing to help in that area if that's something that, you know, maybe would help in the situation. I don't, you know, a stoplight would be a solution, but obviously there's one like a block further, so that doesn't seem like the smartest thing. I guess it's just something that I am increasingly worried about with the two accidents happening. It's just, the one was a four-vehicle accident, air brakes were deployed, the fronts were smashed in. I don't know if anyone was hurt, but it was a scary-looking accident. They're trying, they're coming towards Sioux Falls westbound, trying to turn left into our development, so people are not slowing down, they're not seeing people when they're turning, or people aren't using their signals. There is a sign there that says, "Don't pass on the shoulder." I don't know if that's part of it. People are trying to pass, and there, there's not enough room, and they're hitting them, or if they just don't see them slowing down, and they're, you know, running into them. I don't know what the biggest problem is. I think there's multiple factors involved. People are just not paying attention. But, yeah, I guess, like I said, I feel better after talking to Paul, knowing that it was, it's at least been discussed here before, but like I said, it's just something we, we talk a lot about in our neighborhood, our concerns, but no one actually does anything, so.
I have a question, and this may not be directed at you. The way that that sits, the way that that street feeds into that neighborhood, how much more potential of development is there? In other words, is, is it full, or is it half-full, or does anyone?
It's, it's, there's, there's some, there's, there's no potential to the east yet until the Elsie Metz property, that fence, east of that fence is developed. Going to the west, west of the church, it's there, the, the little mall there. That potentially will connect up with Heritage when that's, when that is developed, west of the church, and then I don't, I can't tell you how many lots would be in there, but it's, it's well over, the majority of the development's done. No, you've got a, you've got a major, yeah, they are, but they all feed on the Heritage.
Yeah, they're, and they're.
They feed over to Heritage.
They don't have any way to get, because people will take the path of least resistance, right? There's a stopway over here, and no stopway over here. Everybody's going over here.
No, there's, we've got a big drainage detention facility in between the development going on to the south and the subdivision. No. If there is, it's gonna be further east, when else, well, no, it won't, because that's park property, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, further to the east than south is, is a drainage channel, and that, I, I don't know that we'll ever have a connection to the south, but we do have, there, there's approximately 20 lots, to answer your question, looking at the stuff on Meadowbrook, if that were extended to the west, and that does not include any of the Odie property being developed. So just in that development, we're looking at roughly 20 lots adjacent to, if Meadowbrook Trail were extended out to Heritage.
I don't know if it's that most pop, popular opinion, but I think about the density around there, and I don't know if a 45 mile speed limit is actually appropriate. I've seen a lot less dense neighborhoods have a 35, 30.
Yep, that's set by the county, yes.
I understand, but we can always.
Yeah, we can always petition the county, yes, indeed.
There is also a daycare just off of Holly, where my kids go to daycare, the building blocks, and I don't know if that could factor into getting the speed limit reduced or not. I mean, I don't want to go 45, 35 there either, but I want the, I want the safe solution for everybody. It's not us, the people in our neighborhood who are driving on that road. It's every, practically everybody in Brandon takes that road.
So we did look at putting a road across at one point.
At one point in time.
And the cost was prohibitive.
Well, the cost, I mean, I just, I just ran it again, and I recall about $400,000 is what we were looking at for the cost of that street being extended and connected to Heritage, but it's not our property. That's still Odie's property, and it would require that we put it, but we plat right-of-way through there so that we can construct the street, so it would be basically forced, and if we were to force it through there, we would have to assess the adjacent property owners.
Assess the benefited property owners.
Right.
So there's, there's a difference, but.
And we would have to front the money to build the road, if that were the case.
I agree.
There has been a traffic study done in this area. When the Heritage and Holly Boulevard intersection was constructed, that signal light was determined to be more effective in that intersection, and at that time, it was determined that at Sandstone, it would not warrant a signal, and I'm not saying that a signal is the answer anyway regarding the intersection. It doesn't necessarily improve the traffic accidents, but that could be part of a continuing study as we look at the safety of that intersection and those traff, the traffic, the accident volume and severity of accidents. But this has been discussed, and it would, it would make sense that we would, that would be our connection point. It's one of the only other options that we have at this point, so, you know, when and how that happens, who pays for the street to be constructed, who it benefits, and, and when that's done is ultimately the question.
And I, I kind of agree with John. I think people are gonna take the, the path of least resistance there. If you put a, if you have a light down west of there, they're gonna stop and go to the, to the problem child, you know, because it's, there's no light there. So, I mean, not that, I, just food for thought.
Could we put some police presence out there for a while and try to slow things down?
Yeah, Dave's, Dave's gone right now, but I will talk to him when he gets back. I'll talk to Wade tomorrow and see if we can't get a little more pres, I was gonna talk to Dave and, and find out the details of the accidents.
That would be.
Sit at prime time, I mean, like 5 o'clock, okay.
5 o'clock or early morning, those seem to be the busy times. We are trying to fix the problem. I mean, we just, we don't have a cut-and-dry answer yet. Yep. Yes, but yeah, it, it, we, we are very well aware of it. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you for. All right. You can push the purple button there, sir. Okay.
Thank you. I'm Tom Smith, Smith Development Company. My son Brady and, and Paul and, and Brian have been negotiating and working through our little Panderosa development for the last two and a half years, and I have to explain to you initially, when we purchased that land from Judy Schroder and her husband Les, we were informed by their counsel, David Rezak, that they had paid for the sidewalks to be installed, and our contract specifically said that. Well, now, here it is, you know, two years later, we're done with Panderosa finally, you know, the street's getting cleaned up, and we'll, we'll be out of the, the development. But in, in our haste, and I do apologize for jumping the gun on putting that sidewalk in without city council approval prior to, you know, doing the construction on it, but it's only, it's a no-brainer. You know, it's gonna be put in there as soon as, you know, the next development is done. It'll be installed, and it's a necessity, so it's not a question of that, but I refer you to this resolution that was done way back in 1998, in which Judy and Les attended the, the meeting. It's number 4398, and it was addressing sidewalk at $15 per, or not only sidewalk, but other assessments, total assessments, totaling like $2.9 million dollars at $15 per foot assessed to each abiding property, as so stated above. And then it says, "Be it further resolved that the contractors who undertake to perform the work of construction herein provided for shall be paid in cash from the sale of the special assessment bonds." And then reading it further on into the resolution, it specifically said that Harlan Faust, Mrs. Schroder, Mrs. Myers, Frank Taylor appeared before the council, and all of them requested that the sidewalk not be put in at that time, but they didn't say, "We're not gonna put it in," they just said, "At that time." Well, here it is, you know, 20 years later, and it needs to be installed, and it was paid for by the Fausts. We bought the land and got credit for the, the matter, and we went to Brian before we installed the sidewalk, and I confess, not just concrete, got a little ahead of themselves, which is contrary to what they normally do. Normally, we're begging them to get to work, but they put 10-foot in before, you know, we, we were really aware that they were doing it, and so I went to Brian and I said, "Well, you know, we want to get the sidewalk in," and then also, on the south side of Panderosa, our Lot 1 buyer there is interested in having that sidewalk installed, and that's the same, you know, situation that, that this is, but we're responsible, of course, for the north side of Sioux Boulevard there, or rather, Panderosa Circle, because that's still in our name. We have, we have the deed for that property, so it just seems to be, to be a no-brainer with the, the way that this is spelled out, that we are to be paid for the, the sidewalk installation. And so we submitted the bill to Brian for $3,900, and today he informs me they're not paying it, and I, I asked him, "Well, what's the basis?" He said, "I don't, I don't give you a basis," and I said, "Well, then, gee," I mean, I was kind of ingesting. I said, "Well, just take it out then," and I wasn't serious, you know, but we would never do that, but it was just kind of strange, and, and I felt, you know, it turned sour, and I don't want to leave Brandon with a, a sour attitude about, you know, a stupid sidewalk after doing, you know, 15 houses in there, so. So we're just at the mercy of the council, to do what's right here. I rest my case, thank you.
Questions, discussion?
What was the, the reasoning behind the city not doing this?
We did not request that the sidewalk be put in. We did not retain any contractors to put it in, and the, the minutes from that meeting stayed, first of all, the special assessment paid by those property owners was not specifically for sidewalk. It was for all of the improvements on Sioux.
Including sidewalk.
The other thing is, we can't assess for something that we don't put in, so if we didn't put a sidewalk in, we're prohibited from placing a special assessment for sidewalk if we didn't put, so the site, the, the assessment that those property owners paid had nothing to do with the sidewalk. Yes, they did come in and talk to the council. The council did grant them that they were going to exclude the east side of Sioux from sidewalk, and I believe the resident, the motion was that they would, if the city wants it, the city will pay for it. Well, I didn't approve sidewalk to be put in.
Well, you didn't.
I don't think anybody approved sidewalk either.
We specifically asked or talked to you about it?
No, you didn't, Tom. We specifically asked.
We specifically came down to you and sat at your office. In fact, two years ago when we were doing this, we told you Judy Schroder got, you know, the.
And I told you at that time, just like I told Faust, that is incorrect. What Mrs. Schroder was telling you was incorrect. I told you that, I told Faust that, I told their realtors that.
I have the letter from the realtor here, and you, you did not say that to the realtor, and I'll, I'll read this letter. Okay. Well, we can make a. Well, the realtor.
But I in no way, shape, or form told you to put sidewalk in.
Well, the, it's going to be put in.
I didn't tell you to do it. The cit, no one from the city told you to put that sidewalk in.
Yeah, you know, when I did Cardinal and Elm up here, we installed a lot of city sidewalk up there at that time, and it was the same thing. It wasn't a big deal. The city, Dave Swear and, and Raleigh, you know, said, "Well, there's sidewalk sections over here that need to be replaced. Just go do them and send us a bill." We did it, you know. We didn't expect at that time that, you know, there was any problem. We don't expect that there's a problem with it at this time, so. I, I would just refer you back to the resolution number 43, whatever I said that was, and let you review this and, and come to your conclusions.
And I would say, because it's not on the city council agenda, you're not gonna be taking action on it anyway tonight, so you can certainly just take it in advisement, take a look at it, and make a decision later, because you're not gonna be able to decide tonight anyway.
Resolution number 43-98. And then I would also, as a matter of record, bring in Kim Kremelick's letter of July 15, 2015, from Brian Reed. And the bill that we have submitted to the city was exactly what it cost us. There was, we, we did not add a dime to the bill. It was $3,900 for that full length of the sidewalk and the handicap accessible ramp. And so we, we thought we were doing the city of Brandon a favor in doing it at cost, what, what our cost is to get it involved, or to get it installed, and, you know, we'll, we'll stand by that agreement at $3,900. Well, sure as heck not gonna go across the street and put in any more until we have an agreement, so. And those people expect that they're getting the, you know, the sidewalk installed too, so. Our agreement with them was that at a, a time that's reasonable and, and they, they want it installed, and probably as soon as they start this next development, it's just a natural that it'll all be installed and get tied in together.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I, I'm sorry, I went over three minutes, so.
All right. Yep. All right, we'll take this under advisement, and we're, can you get copies of that for us, please? Thank you. Anything else in visitors and timed items? If not, we have an update on the big Sioux lift station.
Good evening. Brent Anderson with Stockwell Engineers. Do you want the lift station and the lagoons?
Perfect.
Want of both? Okay. The lift station, Mr. Stockwell couldn't be here this evening, so I got a briefing from him. I understand that the, approximately 99% of the work is done. There's some tweaking with some pumping, some pumps and automation. They're having a major walkthrough tomorrow with all the contractors, subcontractors, in which they'll provide, put together a pump, or a punch list, excuse me, or items that need to be repaired, and we hope to get all those cleaned up and repaired, and I asked Rex, the, after the, the meeting, the briefing meeting, I said, "We, they're, the council's ready to see a final payout," and I said, "When, when can we expect that?" And he said he hopes by your first meeting next month that he would have a final payout. There's a few items that overlap between the lagoon biosalads removal and. and this project, that we're working through those items that are, that are kind of overlap each other. We're making sure that those get sorted out. Any other questions that I can, that I can try to answer for the lagoon or the lift station, excuse me? Okay. The biosalads removal project, good news. We started removing some biosalads today. The contractor is direct field applying them. He's got four semi-tractors with tankers on them. And they're hauling them out to the fields. They're calibrating all their equipment today. So we're hoping there'll be full bore tomorrow. We're finding that Lagoon One, the large one to the east, has the deepest, thickest biosalads. So they're gonna, for lack of a better word, harvest out of there first, 'cause they want as much as they can get, as fast as they can get. But it did start today. So there was, biosalads were being agitated all day long as they were pumping them up into these tanker trucks. I was out there three times today. There's a slight odor. It's not overwhelming. I know that's a big concern of yours. It's not overwhelming unless, I mean, I was standing literally on the banks of lagoon and it wasn't overwhelming. So that's good news. And I don't know if anybody, has anybody had any complaints or anything? So the plan is, they're gonna continue to remove biosalads and direct field apply them as hard as they can, seven days a week, until the farmers cut them off. And we don't, and they said they're getting more requests than they can service now, once the word got out on the street. So the more they can do that, the better. It's faster. It's gonna be knifed in the ground and then it's not the city of Brandon's problem, the way I understand. So the more we can do there, the better. The press showed up over the weekend. And the press is the machine that's gonna press the water out of it and dry it for the field application at Mr. Odie's farm. So that arrived. They're gonna get that set up and rolling maybe by the end of the week. So we could be removing them both methods. But for sure, the direct field applied will be non-stop, seven days a week. They think two to three weeks at a minimum. So full speed ahead, I guess, for that part.
Had we promised him a certain amount?
No, and Ms. Odie's been really good about this because it's kind of been, "You're gonna get, you know, eighteen hundred ton and now it's maybe less." And then we're gonna, then he wanted some direct field applied, but he couldn't wait to plant his corn any longer. So we haven't promised him any amount. What we're gonna try to do is get like a week into it and get a feel for how much we think is gonna be field applied. And we can maybe extrapolate how much he's gonna get for two reasons. Number one, so he knows. Number two, so we can prep an area that's appropriate for that amount. It won't be the full amount, but he doesn't seem to mind. He'll take whatever he can get. So that's good news. Yeah, the odor control, I'll just bring that up. We've switched to the strongest one available, which is cinnamon. So we're now pumping cinnamon through there. I understand that it's, the valve is as high as it can go and the pumps are running as hard as they can. So this is probably, you know, there's gonna be a rep from that company here later this week. And we don't know if there's some tweaking we can do. It's not shooting out a strong odor that covers the city. But if, you know, I walked along the road where the, where the, where these pipes are laying out that are spraying it, and you can smell it just walking along the road. But you can't smell it on the street, so...
I mean, I guess, from what we paid for it, if it's not meeting expectations as promised, I guess we'd like to know as sooner than later.
You know, and I guess it's, I guess that's your folks' decision. I think it is helping. I don't, I don't know what our expectations were, that it was going to be a strong scent that we would smell throughout the city. But it is, it is on. It's operating and it's working. I mean, it's, it's, again, I don't smell any serious smells when I was there, I'm there every day at least once.
The cinnamon is on now?
Cinnamon is on now since noon on Friday. So... Any other questions?
Brent, when the press gets here, plan is still operate twenty-four hours a day?
The press, yeah. Yeah, the press is here. Once it's operational, they're gonna, that's also gonna be twenty-four, seven. But they're gonna stockpile that. That's only gonna be hauled maybe once every four or five days, 'cause they can stockpile enough of it and then makes it more efficient for hauling out to the Odie farm. So hopefully by a week from now, both methods will be full speed ahead.
And there was some discussion, Brent. I just wanna remind everybody that we had talked about potentially extending that date of August thirty-first. We were pretty adamant that we stuck with that August thirty-first completion date for that first phase of the biosalads removals. Has the contractor had any concerns about getting that, the biosalads completely removed by that date?
Not at all. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna get anybody's hopes up, but all I hear is...
I'm not asking for a guarantee, but I mean, as far as what the contractor's proposing to do, that's what his method is, is to get, based on how he's proposing his method of removal, he plans on having it removed by August thirty-first.
He thinks he can beat that date considerably. But we don't wanna make any promises at this point. But the more we can field apply, the faster it goes. So that's good news.
Very much so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you adjust the wind, you know, the matter for the wind and the speed of the wind? So that when there's a north wind, it's less complicated?
We've tried to control the wind, yeah. Just haven't switched for that yet.
Yeah, you turn the wind up.
So, thank you very much.
All right. Item eight, we have a new employee at the golf course, or need a new one.
Carla...
Bamsy?
Bamsy. I'd make a motion to hire Carla Bamsy for community room bartender.
Second.
A motion from McInerney, second from Wells, to approve this hire. Questions or discussion? I assume that since she's the bartender, she will have her TAM training.
Not training before she starts.
Yep. All right. With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, golf course, other than it's gonna be busy June out there?
Yeah, weather's turning nice and warm. So I don't have many updates on it, Brian, if you have anything, but...
No, it's, uh... May's gonna start getting really busy with outings. Kind of looks like it's gonna average two to three a week for the month of May, probably going into June, or this is June, so June, two to three outings a week. They got done with hole, the cart path on number six?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. They're starting to look, I think they've got two more holes to go. We've probably got enough in the fundraising account to finish one of those holes. Zane's goal is to get it done before we host the state meet later this summer. So we'll probably take a look, maybe at the next council meeting, about authorizing an expenditure for that last hole. He's out working, getting some pricing. He's got a pretty good idea how much it's gonna cost, but we'll get those quantities for you. Other than that, it's really busy.
All right. Item nine, police report.
Andrew Baker graduated Saturday from the academy out in Pier. Dave and Wade went out to that. So things, he'll be back on the street. He'll finish up his training with our, with our officers at the end of this month. So probably by the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth of June, he will be out on his own.
And the inspection department report is there also. And the city transit bus, which I think has slowed down some since...
Slowed down considerably?
Daycares are closed and, or not daycares, but preschools are closed and school is out for the summer.
And the new bus is here. If you haven't seen it driving around, it's missing the logo. It says Brandon Transit on the side, but it's missing on logo. We'll get that on it. But it arrived a whole month ago, maybe.
Okay. Then, last item under police, we have the employee assistant plan agreement with Avera. The fire department would like to piggyback off this and it would save them some money.
We currently have our EAP program with Avera that we offer our employees. The fire department's inquired about, I've talked with the fire chief in the past. They would be interested in this type of a program. That was a couple of years ago. We got a quote from our EAP that could provide the services for eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the entire fire department. And if you remember, that includes five free counseling sessions for each employee. If they were to do it on their own, it would cost them fourteen-hundred dollars a year. They will reimburse us the additional cost for the eight-seventy-five.
We've talked, we've talked about this with the insurance people too. And this is a, is a great plan and I certainly would support it and I'll even make the motion to approve it.
A motion from Brooks, second by Wells, to approve the fire department piggybacking on our EAP plan with them reimbursing us the cost for them joining. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anything else, police? Item ten, park and rec. We have our maintenance report.
The pool was open on schedule. I think the week before it opened, our pool vacuum finally died.
Of course.
So we have a new one. And it's fifty-four hundred dollars later. But it does, it is operating. So haven't had any issues. I think Friday, we reached capacity already.
I was gonna say, Friday was a nice, warm day. I imagine people were swimming.
We were at capacity, so I'd imagine, you know, the rest of this week with the temps that are projected, we'll probably reach capacity a couple more times. And that was fully staffed. And that was all the lifeguards scheduled to work, working, so...
How are concessions going with vending machines?
Good, as far as I know.
Okay. They haven't had anybody say, "Where's the concession people and issues?"
Not that I know of.
I've already heard about it. I said, "Yes, my kids and the kids in the neighborhood." I've already heard about it.
Good. All right. We need some summer staff.
One new addition to the summer rec staff, that would be Haley Andrews at eight sixty-five an hour. She will be replacing Molly Keeter.
A motion from Fish, second by Brooks, to approve the hiring of Haley Andrews for our summer rec program. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we have Architecture Incorporated has a Aspen Park concession restroom bleacher proposal.
Arc Inc. has been working with the baseball association on the Field A improvement project. And they did all of the schematics that you saw last fall for the new grandstand, concession stand, dugouts, et cetera. So I contacted them to retain them just to do the concession restroom building. The baseball association will be doing the grandstands, the dugouts, the plaza, the field, et cetera. We're just doing the concession restroom, restroom building. So they submitted this proposal to me last Thursday. Hasn't been in front of the park committee yet. And one thing, uh, I gotta find the, it's eight percent, last paragraph, eight percent of the construction cost. I haven't gotten a cost estimate from Arc Inc. yet on the project. So I'll get that before we...
Okay. So this is just for our, our...
For now. It'll have to, it'll, it'll need to go in front of...
The park board?
You fairly soon, 'cause it's, it's a fairly tight schedule.
Yeah, I see that they're talking, early April twenty-eighteen will be the completion date.
Yeah, 'cause they'll work on it through the winter, probably.
Okay.
So the reason...
It's enclosed. They're good.
Our piece of it, we're going with them because the baseball association is using them for the other piece.
Correct. They've done, they've done all the work to date on it.
You'd have to start over otherwise.
So otherwise, if we brought in another firm, we'd be, we'd have to catch them up to speed. So we'll take, I'll take that to the park committee for the next meeting.
All right. Anything else, Parks? All right. Moving on to item eleven, administration. We have a request from the Bethany Meadows to have a fireworks display, preferably July sixth, that dusk. Bless you.
They do it every year. And right now, I don't think, our fire situation is pretty decent, so... As before, I'm sure they'll let the fire department stand in mind. So I would move to approve.
A motion from Brooks, second by McInerney, to approve this with the condition that the fire department's there. And also, if, heaven forbid, it does turn dry and we prohibit fireworks, that we won't allow this. Is that okay with that motion? Second? If we prohibit the...
Fire department usually does a pretty good job of telling them whether they should require fireworks or not.
Okay. All right. With that being said, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Resolution oh-seven sixteen, staff to approve change orders.
This is a night we've talked about for a little while with the projects. You know, what, what we have been doing in the past is if there's a change order on a project, we wait to approve the change order until it gets in front of the city council, which from time to time results in some delays for those projects. So this resolution would, it's basically a policy, would allow staff, the city engineer and the city administrator, to approve change orders up to twenty-five thousand dollars so that we don't delay projects. And then we would report that back to the council at the next regular council meeting.
So it's an "and"? You guys have to jointly say?
Yep, both of us.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, sir.
Motion from McInerney, second by Brooks, to approve the resolution oh-seven sixteen. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Now we have a flag agreement from the creator of our city flag. He has... I know, we probably haven't sent this to him yet, obviously, since we haven't approved it, right?
This is an agreement with Ron Peterson, who developed the city flag that the council approved at the last meeting. This would allow the city to use the flag in any way, shape, or form we choose.
I spoke to him on the phone a couple of days ago. He, he didn't realize that he has to sign this too, or he would've been here tonight. He's out of town at the moment, but he understands what's coming down and he, "The quicker we can get a flag up," he said, "the better." So we can, all we gotta do, and I've already got my order in for three. So, I, full size and too smaller. Anyway, so I would move approve.
I have a motion from Brooks and a second from Mr. Wells to approve this agreement. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And, uh... It's kind of been, there's one company I know that does this in this area, so do we have to put it out for bids or can we just...
We're, it's highly unlikely that we're gonna buy twenty-five thousand dollars worth of flags.
Okay.
So we're gonna be under that, so we don't have to put it out for bids.
All right. Thank you. So...
I can also tell you that with my connections with Maximum Promotions, believe me, they're waiting.
Yep.
They got my order already.
They, they have emailed me multiple times about this, so... And I just keep telling them. They have emailed me multiple times about this, so. And I just keep telling them, we can't do anything till we have an agreement signed.
Okay.
Yes. So, all right. Anything else in Administration? All right, moving on to item twelve. We have our maintenance report. And then we have some seasonal maintenance people. We have four people that want to join our summer maintenance staff.
Correct. Ethan Brown, Alex Wees, Zachary Smith, Ty Sanow, at the first three at twelve fifteen an hour, and Ty Sanow at ten fifteen an hour.
They will be under your supervision there? All right. I see lawn trimmers, or line trimmers and shovels in their future.
Yes.
Move to approve the hire?
Motion from Brooks, second by Wells, to approve these four young people to join our maintenance staff. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Then we have a young man who has passed his six-month probationary period, received a CDL. So he is going to move from line nineteen to line twenty-one.
With your approval.
With our approval. Motion from Brooks, second by McInerney, to approve Jeremy Olson, relieved of his probationary period and with the pay raise. Questions or discussion? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I still think he should be shoveling that pond, but, good for him. Oh, that's too bad. I'm saying, that big truck, you probably, you can see about this much of him, can't you? I can say that. He's my nephew, so I can, yeah. All right. Quotes on street repair, curb and gutter, valley gutter, and storm sewer. We have one really nice quote and then some that are slightly higher.
So this is for our annual project that we have in, in front of the, call it Slurry Seal Project this year. And it's for most of the, most of the repair is curb and gutter. There's a little bit of valley gutter repair work. And then I also added an alternate bid this year to include, or quote, I should say, to repair some sidewalk in next year's portion of the Slurry Seal Project. This contractor has not done work in the city of Brandon under this name, but he has done some work in the city of Brandon under a different contractor's name. These guys broke off from that contractor, started their own company. Christina and I have been working with them to get their insurance papers to us. They are pending currently. So what I would ask is, and I spoke with them today, and they should have them to us tomorrow. We have the copy of the liability sheet. It just says pending on it. They're working on getting that finalized, and they thought they'd have it tomorrow. So I would ask you to approve this pending that we receive their certificate of liability in full. Did we, did we budget seventy-five in the bid as thirty-eight, or we budgeted forty-five in the bid as thirty-eight? We budgeted forty-five thousand for the base quote. Okay. And thirty thousand for the alternate quote. So it's, it's a total of seventy-five thousand. And that sidewalk, we may, I have not done a full inspection of that. It's the, it's west of Sioux and sort of the Lakota, north of Lakota, Chicory, Chapelwood, that area where, yeah, where we're looking at. We want to get ahead of, like I said, that Thursday's meeting. We want to get ahead of our Slurry Seal Project so that we're not rushing this project to get it done, because we can't necessarily control the timing of our contractors that we have come to do the Slurry Seal Project. That's a project that we, as you know, we piggyback to the city of Sioux Falls. And so we're a little bit at mercy depending on their contract, so it'd be nice to get this, this out of the way. So we want to move into next year's area. If we find out that there's more sidewalk that needs to be repaired, we could very well go over that, that $8,000. I guess that was my question, given the competitiveness of the bid, is there other work out there? Yep, we would fully intend to use them to the most that we can. But that's, I mean, it's what we need to do. And we're not gonna go around town and repair as much sidewalk and curb and gutter as we can with these guys, but. We certainly have areas of town that we want to use. Types of work too. I'm just, if we got the extra money, we gotta.
But we are, we are limited that we can't just.
No, I understand. We'd have to rebid it. Fifty thousand, yeah, that fifty thousand dollar mark is, you know, we're, if we would have just accepted, I just want to point out the, the second two contractors. If we were to accept both the total base and the alternate one, we would have had to go out for actual bids and submit this for advertisement, go through a formal bid process, so. Because we have D and K giving us a quote, we were able to not do that, because we are under that fifty thousand dollar threshold. So we have the ability to use an additional eleven thousand if we wanted to above what we have here, but. I don't, I don't think we will. These guys have done, the work that I've seen them do is very good work. They've done some work for us actually in the industrial park on a driveway and some curb and gutter that they replaced. And I have confidence that they can do the work, and they are extremely interested in getting started as soon as they can. Yep, certificate of liability.
Second?
A motion from McInerney, second from Brooks, to approve the bid to D and K Construction contingent on proof of liability insurance. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, we have a contract payment to Minnehaw County for the bridge reconstruction on Redwood Boulevard.
This was a contract that we had previously approved, the draft version of it. It's come back to you through some discussion with the county that we do not take over the ownership of the Redwood Boulevard Bridge. This is just a payment portion of that sidewalk, the bike trail that's on the south side that we had agreed to pay for. So we, we just want to move forward with that payment. We'll, we'll receive an invoice from the county and, and get that, basically get the check written. But that was, that was approved as a part of that project, just to sort of bring you up to speed. That was something that the county wanted to include on the structure. Basically, the design of that structure, including a bike trail on the south side with the intent that in the future, when Redwood Boulevard is constructed, that we would include a bike trail on the south side extending east up to, eventually up to Chestnut. And to include that as a part of the structure now, obviously made sense. Adding that on at a later date would cost a substantial more amount than what we're paying for our portion of the bridge.
This has been a long time getting done, and I'm glad to see it done, so I would move to approve.
Motion from Brooks, second from Fish with?
With the modification, because there was a draft item that wasn't filled in on page two, that it would be a thousand dollars per year, due at the end of the year after the submission of the bridge inspection report. So we just need to include that in the final agreement that you sign.
That's, that's for a maintenance of the bridge, so, and we're actually, we've discussed with the county, because we have maintenance and inspection on the bridges that we do have control of, McCarty Road is one of them. Those examples, they, they already have an inspector on, not on staff, but on retainer to inspect bridges in city limits, and so we're just basically reimbursing the county for that inspection.
Okay, so gentlemen, or lady and gentlemen who made that. You're all right with that, with that, that amendment? With that being said, any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Then, we have a gentleman who is going to do some volunteer work for us on the maintenance.
I'll make a motion to approve Sterling Odey as a street maintenance volunteer worker.
A motion from McInerney, second by Wells, to approve Sterling Odey has street maintenance volunteer worker. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, we had a discussion about some Christmas decorations to help beautify our city.
I spoke to one supplier today. They are shipping down a catalog with price quotes, looking online for, you know, the decorations we're looking at aren't the old style garland that everybody grew up with. They're, they're iron silhouette with LED lights on it. You can see them in some, some of the newer Christmas decorations you see around. They come in sizes anywhere from two to five, six feet, depending on what you want. You can get snowflakes, you can get candles, you can get bells, all kinds of stuff. Prices run anywhere, I mean, if you really get some fancy ones, you're talking six to seven hundred dollars each. But we're looking in the range of somewhere around two hundred and fifty each. She's shipping me a price schedule as well, so when I get that, we'll, we'll give you a selection.
There you go. Thank you. Anything else in streets? If not, let's go on to some water and sewer business. We have a payout number ten for the lift station from Sioux Falls Civil Constructors.
We have Brente Anderson, again with Stockwell Engineers. We have pay application number ten, and it looks like the amount due to this application is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two forty-six, point nine four. Like I said, there's very minor work left on this one, and hopefully you'll see the final pay application next month.
A motion from Wells, second by Brooks, to approve payout number ten for our lift station. Question or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then. Sioux Construction has payout number one for bio-solid removal and cell regrading.
This one is, this is application number one, so this is essentially the setup of the odor control. Twelve days of odor control running and a small amount of mobilization. So that's what this includes. Next month's will be much larger, I'm sure. Move approval.
Motion from Brooks, second by McInerney, to approve payout number one for bio-solid removal and cell regrading. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have some quotes for some sewer service on Risen Savior's property.
So to reiterate what I was saying on Thursday, is that the reroute of this sewer service for the Risen Savior Catholic Church was spurred by the, really the Sylvan Circle Project Phase Two is the extension of sanitary sewer service up Needles Drive that is straight east of Risen Savior Church. That's the intersection east of their parking lot. That sanitary sewer service currently goes to a manhole in Needles Drive, which is really in the front yard of the property owner on the south side, the first house east of Split Rock Boulevard. In the design that Stockwell put together for the Needles Drive project, during that design, we discussed, Raleigh and I and Brian had discussed the opportunity that we had to potentially remove that sewer service from the current direction that it goes from Risen Savior. It comes out of the east edge of their building and then goes, extends underneath their parking lot, as you can see in that exhibit. And then goes into a manhole on the west side of Split Rock Boulevard, continues across Split Rock Highway eleven underneath Split Rock, and then goes into a manhole that I explained in Needles. So this sort of was, in the design, we decided that it would probably be most advantageous, if we could, to design the sanitary main, the sanitary sewer main on Needles, and not extend this sewer service or connect it into that main if there was another route. And we've been coordinating with the Risen Savior Catholic Church during the last month or so, and their engineer, Gabe Labber with DGR. And they've agreed that this would be beneficial to them. It's, we feel it's beneficial to us as well to remove some of the risk, if you will, having the sewer service extending underneath the state highway, which, you know, at some point, I think, it becomes our responsibility at the point where it goes into the manhole on the west side of Split Rock. We'll remove that manhole. This is something that we will coordinate with Stockwell. We'll potentially get a change order to remove the manhole on the west side of Split Rock that this sanitary sewer service extends into. And then we would cap it underneath Split Rock Boulevard, thereby basically eliminating this sewer service and future maintenance that we may have. So we got some quotes. If anybody has any questions about that, I would move on to the quotes. This alignment that we came up with, there's a sanitary sewer main that runs north on the west side of Risen Savior Catholic Church. This was an option that we came up, we had debated several options. This one made the most sense. There's a few trees that need to come down in that, that grove to the north. And it comes out of their building, we'll make a connection, we'll have several clean outs, and then we'll, we'll core into that existing manhole north and west of Risen Savior Catholic Church. So the quotes that you see, First Rate Excavate was the low quote. And they've done work here. They're a good contractor. I have no, no problem with them as far as references. And the prices that we got are, are very competitive. So on the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars that we have gotten a quote from First Rate, we would recommend that we complete this work, and we'll, and we'll do it in coordination with Risen Savior Catholic Church. They're also resurfacing their parking lot this summer. So we were trying to coordinate these two projects a little bit. We wouldn't really have to do it while they're doing their parking lot, but it would just seem to be the least evasive. It'll look like one project.
Makes more sense.
Motion from Wells, second by Brooks, to approve the quote from First Rate Excavate Company to do the project at Risen Savior Catholic Church. Questions or discussion?
As far as the work, just, I would say, probably, yeah, two weeks.
Getting started and, and the work. Just curious.
To, to complete the project, we would still want to try to work with the Catholic Church to work around their project that they're doing, their, their, their surfacing, resurfacing of the parking lot. But I'm not gonna wait for First Rate Excavate. If they have the opportunity to come in, based on their schedule, we'll go ahead and move forward with the project. But I definitely want to keep that in mind that, you know, we're, we have asked, we really initiated this project. And so from the church's standpoint, although we're coordinating with them, I want to be sensitive to their schedule as well. So I, I mean, I don't want First Rate to say we're moving in next week and the church says absolutely not. So that, that's something that we'll have to work through. Don, we haven't finalized anything for a schedule.
Okay. All right. With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Resolution oh six seventeen, Sewer Rates.
This gets back to our long, drawn-out discussion on SDCs. If you remember, we looked at implementing connection fees to both the, whoever pulls the building permit, as well as the contractor, and those, and then we would pick up, the city would pick up approximately half of the base charge of twenty-three ninety-one. If you remember, we left it up to the homeowner, buyer, or contractor to determine whether or not they wanted to pick up the extra fees for a larger meter. The meter charge, twenty-three ninety-one, will. Meter charge, $23.91, will pay for the SDC charge up to a three-quarter inch meter, so if the homeowner chooses to purchase a one-inch meter, I believe that charge was around $5,500 for the SDC charge, they would pay the balance between $5,500 and $23.91. So this 27 cents per thousand gallons on a usage charge or volume charge to all, would be spread out through all of the customers, this would offset or make up the revenue for the city share of the base SDC charge.
So what do we, on an average, that would cost the holder, how much for?
A dollar, what was it, a dollar, about a buck twenty a month? You know, I think it was like thirteen, about $15 a year, $16 a year.
On average?
On average. For the, for the, the average user, which we anticipate is 5,000 gallons, you know, the state, that's what the state tells us we have to base our rates off of, so...
And that's gonna cover the whole other half?
It should. You know, that was, that's based on the average number of, of connections that we do annually, and we, that was a three-year average. You know, unless we've got a great boom in, in permits and go up to, you know, 70 permits or 80 permits, we may have a shortfall there, but that's based on about 55 to 60 permits a year, SDC charges a year.
Motion from Wells, second by Fish, to approve resolution 0617 on sewer rates. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, we have a review of the agreement with the state of forced main on Rice.
This is for the construction of, of the relocation of a force, our existing force main, and then the installation of a conduit under the SD 100 project, so that when, in a few years, when we install a second force main to Sioux Falls, we won't have to dig up Highway 100. So right now, the, the state will include all of those costs in their contract. We have to then reimburse them for payment of the new conduit. They are installing the force main itself at their cost.
Motion from Wells, second by Brooks, to approve the agreement with the state for the force main on Rice Street. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right. We have a update on the purchase agreement for a proposed water tower location.
This is the third amendment to the purchase agreement we have with Randy Nelson to purchase the water tower site on the east side. I think the current amendment runs out into this month, end of June. Well, it's currently in litigation. I believe the court date's scheduled for August.
August 21st?
So this would extend that purchase agreement until next March, March 1st.
A motion from Wells, second by, by Brooks, to approve the purchase agreement for the proposed water tower location. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Anything else in water and sewer? Yes, Mr. Hooky?
To let everybody know, we did reach 1.5 million gallons of water yesterday.
Yep.
It seemed quite a phenomenal watering in the area of the suburbs.
Was it 1.6?
1.6 for three consecutive days will be the trigger for mandatory water restrictions. And once we hit that, Raleigh will be sure to tell me, I'm sure, and then we will get it out on the website, get it out to the paper, get it on Facebook, put it on Channel 16. So I would anticipate that the likelihood is that we're probably gonna hit it this week.
Yes.
Would be my guess.
What do you do when you see people, as you're traversing through the city on your various excursions, and you see sprinklers on at 12 o'clock in, for better word, afternoon? I know it's not...
We talk to them, we try to let them know that it's not a good type of state, you know, in order of the state that there are certain types of day, for better word anyway, so.
And we, we do have a door hanger that kind of outlines what those restrictions are, and just, we could, we could, you know, find them, I don't think that's, at least for the first go-around.
Okay.
We'll do the door hanger first, and we usually get pretty good...
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're giving them a warning, but if it's the same...
That's one of them. Will the, will the 1.6, and the reason we have that, levels change once we have the additional water towers?
Well, it, probably, because we'll have more storage capacity. I mean, right now, we've got 200,000 gallons of elevated storage, we've got a half a million of in-ground storage. So if we're using 2 million gallons a day, we're turning over the water tower 10 times. You know, the rule of thumb is that you should have one days of elevated storage. So when we build the two towers, if we build the two towers, we'll have excess storage for the time being. But yeah, that should solve that issue with, with watering restrictions, as well as upgrading the plant.
Because our aquifers have plenty, right? It's just the time it takes to...
Yeah, aquifers have plenty. You know, we will have a bottleneck at the treatment plant until we upsize that, probably in the nearer future than what we hope. But with the new HMO process, we'll run both wells alternating, but at some point in, we've got some triggers for that water plant expansion. When we, when we reach 75% capacity, I think, we need to be in design. When we hit about 80, 85%, we need to be under construction. That's probably gonna happen in five to eight years at the most, so we, the nice thing with the elevated storage, though, the plant can run 24 hours a day if we need to and fill those, fill those elevated storage tanks, so we should have plenty of storage.
All right, very good. Okay. Any other business before council? If not, I will entertain the motion.
So move. It's a true.
I have a motion from Brooks, second by McInerney, for adjournment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.